It is 10 minutes after 8 o'clock. We've been in closed session under Sections 551.072 and 551.074 of the Texas Open Meetings Act, and no action was taken. We'll move on now to Item 4, Audience Per Guest. I'm glad if nobody signed up. Then we will go to Items 5, Discussion Updates. Before we do that, are there any guests tonight that we need to take out of order for anything?
No, the special presenters are up now.
Okay. We'll move on to Item 5A, Presentation Discussion on Lone Star Governments. Dr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I wanted to be sure and wish everybody very happy holidays. And we'll say, I wanted to also recognize that next Sunday, the 17th, we will be celebrating trustee Larry Pettis's birthday. We'll table the singing of "Happy Birthday" till his voice is a little bit better. Normally, you're the singer.
Yeah.
But we'll deal with that. Having said that...
Oh, you don't want that.
So as far as our continuous government presentation, then we'd like to start at, for the record, approximately 8:13 PM. We thought that it would be helpful for this board to begin a two-part presentation. One of the parts we'd like to do tonight is on our Elementary Gifted and Talented Program. I'd like to invite Dr. Scott McClanahan, who is serving as our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. He also coordinates our Advanced Academics program. And allow him to make a few introductory remarks and introduce our presenter. So very proud of the work that's been done in Gifted and Talented. And you'll see over the next 60 days that I would like for us to really commit to these kids, just like we commit to any other group of kids, that need specialized services. And so our commitment is robust, and we hope to have more conversations with our gifted and talented families, just as we're trying to do with other family engagement ideas. We've revamped our curriculum design, our assessment design, our identification, and very excited for what we're going to do for these kids in the future. Dr. McClanahan, would you like to make some comments and introduce our presenter?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. President and Board. I have with me Ms. Ashley Duncan, who serves as my Assistant Director of Advanced Academics. And she kind of spearheads our elementary program. And so I thought that I would start off and then let Ashley come in and tell you about where our program is currently sitting. So prior to 2015, when I came into the district and started in Advanced Academics, the Gifted and Talented program had struggled in several areas. We were facing inequity in our identified student population. We had an over-identification of gifted students. We were sitting close to double the state average, and a disparity in services provided to gifted elementary students. And we, when Ashley and I really started looking at those, a lot of them, we could attribute right back to previous local identification procedures that had been used, that were out of alignment with the state guidelines. And so we really started at that point to reconstruct our model and look at new identification processes that we could use that would be more equitable for all of our students in the district. And what that has resulted in is we have gotten a lot of attention. For three years now, Baylor has asked us to come and speak at their differentiation conference. Ashley has actually presented at the National Association of Gifted Children Conference two years in a row. And this year, our instructional specialist also had a proposal. And all of those presentations were about our, the structure of our program, and how we have molded it into what it is now, which is working quite successfully. So I'm going to turn it over to Ashley and let her kind of walk you through the changes that we've made and where we currently are.
All right. Good evening. So in fall of 2015, we really just focused on a verbal reasoning screener. We used the N-N-A-T, which is a nonverbal reasoning picture puzzle. It takes about 30 minutes. It's timed. We gave all students, 2nd through 5th grade, on campuses except Lake Erie, Hillcrest, and Mountain View, due to already high populations on those campuses. We tested all 2nd through 5th graders across the district. A lot of tests, 3,900 students tested. Out of those, 6.2% were recommended and invited to participate in the program. After 2015, we put into our first-grade screener using the COGAP, which gives us a nonverbal, a verbal, and a quantitative score. We do that at the end of the first-grade year, so in May. In 2015-16 school year, we tested almost 1,200 students, with 5% of those qualifying. In the 2016-17 school year, a little over 1,200, and 7% of those qualified. And we will do that again this May with our first-grade kiddos. Currently, our nominations, 2016-17, we had 254 total nominations for the school year. 11.8% of those were identified. And this year, so far, we are currently in our fall nomination window. We've had 202 students nominated, and those decisions are still pending. We're still going through the Phase 2 testing on that. So our nomination process, we've done some tweaking to it this year to make sure that we give students every opportunity to show us their gifts and talents. We have a nomination that includes qualitative data from the campus, the parent, and even the student. We also offer an additional campus qualitative data if a counselor, or a principal, or an instructional specialist, or a tutor, or somebody from the campus wants to score the student on that as well. Then we have our Phase 1 testing, which we use the Naglere, the Nonverbal Reasoning, and the Torrance Test of Creative Thinking, that gives us a divergent thinking score. Phase 1 recommendations are sent to principals, and they have the opportunity to call an ARE and discuss those scores, whether we recommend for Phase 2 testing or not. And then the Phase 2 testing begins, and that's what we use. We've pulled in the Iowa, which gives us academic scores. So it tells us where students' academic strengths are. And the reason we've brought that in, in addition to the Naglere, is because we were qualifying students with the Naglere and the Torrance, and telling teachers, yes, they're gifted, and not being able to tell teachers how to best serve them in their classroom. So the Iowa gives us that data to say, this student is gifted in English Language Arts, or this student is advanced in math, but they're average in Language Arts. So it gives us that additional data for those teachers. We make those Phase 2 recommendations for identification and have those AREs, and then the notification is sent to the campus and the parents. So our nomination window, we have a fall nomination window where we collect nominations from very first day. We do require, or beginning this year, we required all campuses to have a nomination training on their campus with all of their staff before nominations were received, so that we could increase the number of nominations coming from teachers outside of those who already serve GT kids. In the past, we were only getting nominations from cluster classroom teachers, teachers that already worked with GT students. So we really wanted to make sure that other teachers understood the qualities of a gifted student, and what to look for in the process that they could go through to nominate a student. So we did that the first few weeks of school, and then the fall window opened, closed on Halloween, and we started our Phase 1 testing quickly after that. Our spring nominations started November 1st, and they will end February 28th. And our kindergarten nominations are the month of January. So communication about nominations, as well as the results of the testing, go through the campus. We also send, have information on our website. And we went to evening, parent night, at the beginning of the year, on each campus, whether it was open house or meet the teacher. We made every effort to be at least every campus one time to be able to have a table and speak to parents about nominations and what GT was. We have out-of-district students, New Duwaco SD, and they are tested upon enrollment request. So I, every week, I get calls from parents from outside of the district saying, can I have my student tested for your program? And so we make a testing one next Friday when he gets out of school for the holiday. He's coming to test. So we get those nominations, and we will test them as they request it. And to meet exemplary program status, Waco ISD maintains and open a nomination window. So our appeals process, in the past, appeals requests were accepted only from parents, and they had to be within 10 days of the decision notification of them receiving the letter. On the, with the letter saying that their student did not qualify for services at this time, it explained the appeal process for them. This year, we have added the component that teachers, counselors, administrators, or even the student themselves can appeal the decision of the committee. We are in that appeal process right now. We've got about six that have come in since we sent out the Phase 1 letters last week. And so that gives us, and we have lots of options through the appeal process, of what is best to, the next step for the student. So appeals must be provide, must provide evidence that the student's knowledge, skills, and ability are superior to those demonstrated and measured. They have to prove to us that the test was invalid, or that it did not collect appropriate data. And the ARE committee may accept the additional documentation for identification, or we can request Phase 3 testing to determine if the student does qualify for services. And then students can be renominated the following school year if the appeal fails to provide preponderance of evidence. So last year, we saw a need for something different, something more. We noticed that on campuses such as JH Hines, we were testing the kiddos. Like when we did the universal screener in 2015, we had nine students qualify at JH Hines. JH Hines is a big campus, and there should have been a lot more. And so we started thinking about what we could do to help build that potential and define those kids, because we knew that they were sitting there. So we worked with Ms. April last fall, and she looked at a lot of student data and gave us the top quartile of 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students. And we gave them the COGAP in the fall. Based on their performance on the COGAP, we took the top quartile of that, and we invited them to participate in what we called the UP program, which was unlocking potential. We ended up with 14 students in grades 3rd, 4th, and 5th, and we worked with them over 16 weeks, one hour a week. So a total of 16 hours throughout the spring semester. Students received an introduction of Carol Dweck's Growth Mindset Model, and we really reiterated that their brains were going to hurt when they left, that they were there to learn, and that they could learn, and they could do more. A GT enrichment teacher that was serving JH Hines used the gray level science content to present problem-based learning opportunities. So we took what they were missing in the classroom, we pulled them out during science instruction, and we took the content, the teaks that were being taught while they were out, and we provided problem-based learning instead of, in lieu of what they were receiving in the classroom. So we provided that supplemental instruction and extension for those advanced learners. We taught them high-yield strategies and encouraged the problem-solving and high-level thinking to help build their performance in the classroom. At the end of that 16 weeks, we gave those students the COGAP again, to see their growth. So seven out of the 14 students showed double-digit growth in their COGAP composite score. We had one student that grew 22 points in his overall composite score. Eight out of the 10 students with previous STAR testing data showed growth in reading, with two students mastering, reaching masters. Seven out of the 10 students with previous STAR testing data showed growth in math, with two students reaching masters. Additionally, one student with no previous data, one of our 3rd graders, reached masters. After reviewing all of the data collected, five of those 14 students were invited to participate in the district's Gifted and Talented Program. And one of the students that was not invited last year has been nominated this year and is in the process of her Phase 2 testing. So she was recommended after her Phase 1 testing for that Phase 2. And she was one of ours that received masters on her STAR. Our current population, you can see, we've grown and changed a little bit since 2015. Our national standard, our national percentage for gifted identification is roughly estimated around 6%. Our state average is 7.5%. Waco ISD is currently at a little over 10% as a whole. So with our changes that we've made, we're trying to become more in line with the state average. This is just the elementary population percentages. So next week, you'll see the secondary percentages. But we have made some gains, and, see, our Asian population has stayed about the same. Our African-American population, there has been some dips, but we are back up from last year. Our white population has become more closely aligned with our district population. We were grossly over-identified in our Caucasian population, and it is becoming more aligned. And then our 2 and more race are pretty close in there, and our Hispanic and Los Osos economic are closer in line. So our total GT students at the elementary level, we have 380 current GT students, which is 5.5% of our elementary population. That's a lot of data. Does anybody have a question?
Are there any questions from the board? Go ahead, Ms. Cordway.
Sorry, can't see it. Do we know, I know you were talking about the growth on the COGAP for these 14 students after they've done kind of these enrichment activities, problem-based learning. Do we know, kind of as a whole, this cohort of GT population students, do we know kind of their, how much growth they make a year? Is that something that we're tracking specifically for these GT students? Like, are they making the one-year growth? Are they making two-years growth with this enrichment, you know, that you're offering?
Right. We have not tracked that yet. However, we are, with the addition of the Iowa to our nomination screening, we also assess the 5th grade GT students with the Iowa. So as we move forward, those students that are qualified GT would have taken it to qualify, and will be able to also see that data at their 5th grade level. And we do that at the 5th grade level to ensure that they are properly served at the middle-school level through pre-AP in their area of strength.
Is the Iowa test given at 1st or 2nd grade? What grade is that?
The Iowa test is what we've added to our Phase 2, that's our Phase 2 nomination testing.
At every, at every grade level?
Yes. So if you qualify for gifted and talented from this moment forward, you will take the Iowa.
And do we, do we track as far as their, kind of their STAR test? If every one of them gets masters or mastery? Do we do that?
We run that data, and we look at that data. That's something that Kayla does very well, to look at where our students score, what their strengths are. We look at, is it a teacher that, you know, something that we can help with the teacher level, or are there specific students? We do look at that data and track our GT students throughout the year. And we always kind of know where our kiddos are, who's on our watch list, who we're concerned about, and who's struggling academically.
Yeah, I think that was my other question. Do we have students who are struggling academically, who are being served?
Yes. We have a watch list. And it is, we look at, did they fail their DBAs? Did they fail last year's STAR? Are they failing on the report card? And we have a whole furlough process that we go through, that we ask the teachers for data. We really dig in to see, are there other things going on with this student? Is, are the grades that they're getting right now out of their character? Are they typically a strong student, all of a sudden they dipped? Or has this been a pattern? We look at all of those things, and we have a watch list that we continue to check in on and watch those kiddos.
And Ms. Cordway, we have, what we've uncovered by doing that is sometimes we're able to see things that they don't see on the campus. We'll be able to point out to them, well, we've noticed that there's been a really significant drop-off in grades since November to February. Did something happen over Christmas that we really need to find out about? And it's helped us to uncover problems that students have had, that we are then able to intervene and get them put back on course. And so...
Other questions from the board?
Asian, black, white, 2 or more, and Hispanic, those are percentages of the GT population...
There's, there's like the...
I got 113% or so on 20 cents. It's also a big jump in the Hispanic percentage, at least from year to year.
That was because of our universal screener.
We found a lot of bilingual GT kiddos, a lot of bilingual GT kiddos.
So many that they're even more than 100%? Oh, okay.
Wow. It goes out up to about 113.
And that's the data that, we got that data from our data department.
Not a big deal. I just was, I thought maybe I was misunderstanding what numbers that represented, so...
Well, we actually keep the data, and, but we don't usually split it down into elementary and secondary. So when we needed that data, we requested it from our data person, and that's what we got. So, sorry about that.
Other questions from the board? Scott, I think the PowerPoint in the board packet, if an earlier version...
It's a little bit different because we were going to do all, both of them together.
Right. So you've got a couple of extra secondary slides, but we're missing the slides, for example, on the case study about what was done at JH Hines and some of that.
Right.
Could you email that to the board tomorrow, so we could have the, some of that detail as well? Thanks, sir. Anything else from the board?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We have one more, we have one more slide that might help you.
Sorry, I think I jumped the gun. This is just a progression of what our services have looked like since 2015. In 2015, we did the cluster grouping, where we offered anchor time, which was an intervention enrichment time for our GT kiddos. It was one hour a day, four days a week, and it was provided by the campuses, and it was for them to complete their state-required GT projects. In 2016, y'all graciously gave us five GT enrichment teachers, and we started our GT and Pull-Out, which is three hours a week on each campus with groups of students. And we had three components last year, which was research, social-emotional learning, and creative problem-solving. After speaking with the principals at the end of the last year and surveying the students, we added some components and changed some things. So our students, we've included the divergent and convergent thinking into our plan. They still work on research. They're doing journey time and inside-out time. Inside-out time is for our primary students, where they are learning about what it means to be a gifted student from the inside out. And our journey time is our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students are going through the journey to become autonomous learners. And then we have added our advanced vocabulary strategies and mind-mission time. And part of mind-mission time, last year, when we did the creative problem-solving, it was very hands-on, and they were building, you know, bridges out of straws and toothpicks and that kind of thing. And they're still doing those kinds of things, which go along with the destination imagination, vision, and, but we've added the mind-mission part, which brings in the social studies content. So they'll learn about the Statue of Liberty, and then they will do a mission on building something that goes along with that content area.
Tell them about what we use.
So last year, our first theme that we used to get the ball rolling, we did a whole unit on the brain. And so all students, 1st through 5th grade, learned about the brain and how it works. We tied in growth mindset, and we spent, spent a good amount of time that first semester really just building the growth mindset in our students, because what we were going to ask them to do was going to be hard, and we needed them to feel like they could do it. So we've spent a lot of time on that. This year, we started the year again with growth mindset, reiterating that, introducing it to our new kiddos. And then they did a whole unit on the heart. So they learned how the heart works, 1st through 5th grade, obviously different levels of content there, but, so they learned all about the heart, how it works, how it relates to a car and its motor, and made those analogies there, and learned about the veins and the arteries. So then, this year, they've been working on small projects throughout to build up to their APP, their final GT project in the fall, or in the spring, where they are focusing on specific research skills. Because we found last year, even though they were being taught research, and everybody was getting the same thing, they were still really struggling with those research components. And so we've broken it down even more into smaller research projects throughout the year, and really focusing on specific research, so that when they get to that 6th grade level, they have a strong foundation and can be successful in things like the history fair and their APP, or the science fair, because they have a strong research foundation.
And one of the reasons that we picked those two themes, last year, we worked with the brain, because we really explored passions, and where your passions come from, and what part of your brain will unpack that. And we started the kids off at the beginning of the year, learning about the parts of the brain, and then we bought them the foam wig heads. And with molding clay, they actually made brains, and then went through and actually labeled all the different parts. And it was really exciting to hear the kids talking about the cerebellum and what it does. And, you know, they were using language that we would expect high schoolers to use, and you're talking about 2nd graders and 3rd graders. And then this year, we really chose the heart, because we wanted them to look at that more socio-emotional part and compassion. And, you know, so we're, we're trying to make them well-rounded gifted students, because we realize a lot of them, you know, they get wound up in themselves, and they become perfectionists, and that limits them. And we really want them to understand that about themselves, so that they can move forward and be as academically successful as possible. Just have a question, Mr. Manning?
When you are trying to identify gifted and talented students, what are you trying to identify? Are you identifying that they have a higher IQ than the average student? Or are you identifying the fact that they are strong in math, science, or social studies? And I ask that question along the same line. The analogy is that Michael Jordan was one of the greatest basketball players we ever had, but when he went to play baseball, he wasn't that gifted. So that's why I'm asking.
I'm glad you say that, because our teachers have this kind of false impression sometimes, that if a kid is GT, they're GT and everything. And we don't have a lot of those. We have kids that have very definite giftedness in an area, but they might struggle in another one, and they don't always cut them that slack that they need, because that's not their area of giftedness. But what we really look for is, you know, we have some kind of nationally-defined categories that we look for. We want to see how a kid compares to a national standard. And, you know, we want a kid that will at least cut at 90%. And then we want to look for different types of giftedness, because they might not be a verbal kid, they might be a kid that's more nonverbal. So we want to make sure that we're giving a verbal test and a nonverbal test. We also want to see if we've got creative thinkers or divergent thinkers, so that we can identify artistic giftedness and creativity. And so when we're looking, we're using all these different measures, where it's ranking that kid in different stainines compared to the, you know, nationally-normed test, so that we can see if we can find an area of giftedness.
So they, so on average, I would say, you saying that across the board, they have a, I'm saying higher intelligence, or whatever the case may be, but like, we saying that a child that's really gifted in math may not succeed, if that's the only one area that they are gifted in.
Right. We have, we look for a preponderance of evidence. And so they might not have a high nonverbal IQ, but they might do really well on the creative thinking. So we don't have a gatekeeper. We don't have just one thing that qualifies them. We give them opportunities to qualify academically, nonverbally, creatively, and artistically. And then through our qualitative data, that brings in the leadership component, that brings in, each, our questionnaire for parents, students, and teachers is broken up by the different five gifted domains. And so it gives us data and allows them to kind of score on a Likert scale where the area of giftedness is. And this year, we've added a narrative component to the teacher's questionnaire that asks them, you know, which was the highest domain that you found in this student, and please give us some qualitative data, observations, work samples, something that goes along with why you gave them all fours and leadership. What have you seen? So that gives us more than just numbers for our students.
And even in, like, artistic, you know, giftedness, because we have kids that are, you know, musically gifted, and we serve that. We have a large fine arts program. And so because we're able to serve that, we'll also qualify students with things like artistic giftedness. And a lot of districts... giftedness. And a lot of districts don't do that because they don't service that type of giftedness.
With regards then to a person, a student who's identified strong in, I will say, arts, music, it would be expected then their performance in an Atlas math class would be average, below average?
Well, typically, if a kid's got good musical ability, that usually correlates to a higher math ability as well.
Bad example.
But, but yes, we might, we might find them struggle a little bit more. But we also find that by putting them in with those other gifted students, that they'll actually rise to the challenge.
I guess my point was that, you know, if they are identified gifted in a certain area, an area would be expected that they would be lacking in equivalent strength because, like you said, they're not gifted in all areas. How do we accommodate the instructional side of those areas where they're not as gifted perhaps? Is that...
Beginning last year, when we started the Iowa for all fifth-grade GT students, that data is shared with Mr. Rambo and Ms. Hall at Atlas so that they can make the, excuse me, arrangements or know this student is average in math or this student is advanced in math. And hopes that that data is being shared with teachers and interventions are putting in, being put in place. And if a student is struggling, going back to that data and saying, you know, this kiddo scored the average range in math. They are not gifted in math, but this teacher, you know, has a class full of highly gifted students. So this might not be the, the right class period for this student. So hopefully some data-driven decisions on student placement in those courses and how teachers can intervene is being used. But that started last year.
And so, so what we found two years ago was that math was one of those that really kind of broke itself out naturally for us. And what we found was that not every one of those Atlas eighth graders was ready to go into algebra. And so we actually have a pre-AP Math VIII now so that we can better serve those kids because we knew that they were not feeling successful in that. Now, if we go back to the elementary, we do a really strong push on growth mindset in our GT enrichment. So that those kids don't feel like they're limited just because they know they're not great in math.
Right.
We help them understand you can grow that intelligence. You just have to be, you have to persevere, you have to be willing to, you know, not let defeat, you know, stop you. And by doing that, we've really seen those, those kids blossom.
Excellent. Because I would suspect that if they're outside their gifted area that they're most talented in, and I'm using example of a, of a math class, I would expect that to be very frustrating to them.
Right.
That they're not able to achieve the same equivalent level that they were in the other gifted areas.
And we got lucky because, you know, we adopted a new teacher evaluation appraisal and it centers on differentiation. And in the GT world, that's, you know, one of our commandments. And so it plays right in because we know every teacher should be differentiating. And regardless of whether you're a regular classroom teacher or a GT classroom teacher, you have to differentiate for the kids that you have in there.
Exactly. To meet the needs of that gifted student across all areas. And thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ash. Item B, update on class waivers. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, did you want to clock the, is there anything else we wanted to do on the Lone Star Governance? I know the time tracker's in the packet. Was there anything else you wanted to discuss on progress measures?
Can I build a case that discussing class waivers is part of Lone Star Governance?
Sure.
Class size. At the beginning of our, this school year, each school district in Texas is required to review its class-size enrollment to determine whether its class sizes for kindergarten through fourth grade meet the requirements of the Texas Education Code. As a district of innovation, Waco ISD is exempt from requirements of Texas Education Code 25.112 after the first six weeks of instruction. Our central office administrators work with the campus principals and teachers to determine if a class exceeding 22 to 1 should be divided or allowed to exceed the Texas Education Code limit. Attached, you found a copy of the classes by campus and grade level, grade levels that exceed the Texas Education Code limit. So we have a total of five classes that exceed the limit. One of them is in second grade, one of our bilingual first-grade classes, one kindergarten, one combined kindergarten in first grade, and one second grade. None of them are over 24. So it really is an issue if we were to split the class. We split it into 12 and 12, requires to hire another teacher. So we are making sure that we monitor this and we certainly don't want to have an abundance of classes that exceed 22 to 1. But the law requires that we inform the board and we feel like an extra layer of transparency is to do it in a public meeting.
Any comments or questions? I will say this. I know that when we were looking at the District of Innovation, there were legitimate concerns of some of the teachers that if we exempted that, we would have a lot of classes that exceeded the 20. And I appreciate the administration paying attention to it, the fact there are only five across the district. I mean, as you said, if you've got 23 or 24 kids, it's hard to justify splitting that into 12 or 11. And it's even harder to justify causing one of those families to have to go to a school other than their neighborhood school, just to get us beneath that. And so I appreciate the administration's attention to it. And it looks like clearly there's, they, they are trying to keep it as close to 22 to 1 as possible.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anything else from the board on that? All right. Then at 8:48, we'll move on to reports and discussions from board member committees. Anybody want to report on any of the boards they serve on for the Board of Trustees? All right. Then we'll go on to the update on IR campuses. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I said last month, in terms of improvement required campuses, our faculties and staff are working so hard to meet state standards this year. We're down to our last semester. We fervently believe that our campuses are capable of exceeding all state and federal standards. We believe that with everything that is in us, and this is an adult issue. Our campuses and our curriculum teams are all very laser-like focused on accomplishing this district goal. As you know, we're also working on a Plan B. And Plan B happens if one or more of our campuses that have been improvement required for four years go to improvement required a fifth year. Part of that work has included meeting with the community to get their input. We've received some great feedback and we want to address something that several people have said. We've heard people say that they feel like Waco ISD is backed into a corner. Well, there's some truth to that. If our campuses don't make it, according to the Texas Education Agency representatives, we really only have three choices. Close the schools, allow the Texas Education to replace the Board of Trustees, or identify a partner, an entity that can basically operate those campuses. That's it. Now, we've had some discussions about going to make sure that those are our only options, but we want to emphasize to the public that that's it. We can look at getting new campus IDs, but at the end of the day, we either close the schools, get a board, or identify a partner. Now, TEA, in my humble opinion, is wanting us to partner with a charter network. But they've also allowed through Senate Bill 1882 for, for us to explore partnering with members of our own community that are local nonprofit organizations. And that's why we've been exploring that partnership and how it would function. We've looked at everything from different nonprofits to who would provide us the best partnership. And we really want to make sure that decisions about these schools continue to be made by our community. The other part of this work is identifying best practices to improve student outcomes and in particularly, strategies to improve the quality of instruction. Differentiating our instruction is one of the strategies that we're focused on. And we're going to implement this through what we call a blended learning model. It is a commitment to unprecedented, taking advantage of our technical advances, really making it a commitment to state-of-the-art hardware and software, and unprecedented professional development for our teachers and staff to utilize a blended learning model to focus on improving literacy and augment achievement in our other core areas as well. Innovations in technology make it possible for teachers to provide this differentiated instruction we value. It better meets the needs of individualizing the learning for each kid. Teachers can match each student with instructional materials, instructional materials based on his or her reading level. As a result, students at different levels are appropriately challenged in the same classroom at the same time. And we want to emphasize to the public that we're not waiting until next year to get things started. Our curriculum and instruction department has already trained all of our principals on a blended learning system called Achieve 3000. And later this month, we will be training about 600 teachers to use this model in our classrooms. And we hope that this will help to raise our students' reading levels. Where literacy is the fundamental challenge we have in our school system. And we're trying to address that issue aggressively. When we implement a transformation plan for our improvement required schools, that plan will include a comprehensive technology and training program to support differentiated instruction through blended learning. We've had conversations with our community about this model. We've kept the board informed. And we are moving toward developing a proposal that we're asking the board to consider and possibly act on in the regular board meeting in the month of January. So March 1st is our deadline with Texas Education Agency. Really, our plans are to have this plan completed, identify a partner, and hopefully we won't even have to have this discussion because of the work that we do this next semester will lift all of our campuses out of improvement required status. That's our update at this time and we'll have another update next week.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Any questions from the board? All right. We'll move on to item six, discussion of possible action regarding a resolution to cast votes in the McLennan County Appraisal District Board election. I will apprise the board that the way the votes are allocated, based on the total size of the tax levy, Waco ISD has allocated 940 votes. So I need a motion on how to cast those 940 votes. Ms. T. Bell, there's a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Alan, thank you for continuing to provide that service for the board.
Thank you.
And for the community.
Thank you, the board. And I will recuse myself of saying.
We'll move on to the consent agenda quickly. Are there any questions regarding speaking services at superintendent at item A? Any questions regarding the budget amendments at item B? Any questions regarding the job order contract for kitchen equipment repair services? Any questions regarding the memorandum of understanding between all the governmental entities with respect, respect to the tax foreclosed properties? All right. On the revision to BED local, how about the...
We just recently changed our guest speaker, sorry. Can we go over that a little bit? What's, what are we doing there? What precipitated, on the, the change of policy, BED local?
A change of state law that says if you are, any meeting at which you receive public comment or take action has to be recorded and made available for viewing on the website. And I think the truth is, we have had posted for public comment at this workshop and nobody's spoken at the workshop until Ms. Cooper apprised us of the book giveaway last month in about two and a half years. So we've had it posted without anybody participating.
Okay.
They come to the televised meeting instead.
So the accommodations we've made just really wasn't being used. Yeah, fair enough. Okay.
Other questions? All right. Any questions on the resignation incentive option? Any announcements from anybody on the dais? Yes, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I would like to thank both of you ladies back there for all the books that y'all gave out. And I believe this is what, the third year y'all have done that?
Second.
Oh, second year, huh? Y'all skipped last year for some reason or something, something happened, right? Okay. I'm glad y'all brought her back. And like always, y'all done a great job, so I applaud you. Thank you very much.
Really do appreciate what y'all did with TSTA. That was very, very gracious to give that to all those new teachers and all those students. Any others' announcements? All right. Hearing none. Then at 8:58, we'll stand adjourned.